Director Cleveland Heights University High School District Board of Education Work Session Meeting, thank you for joining us. Mr. Gaynor, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Heinz, Ms. Lewis, Mr. Posh.
Here.
Ms. Serini?
Here.
Ms. Wright?
Here. Before we begin our work session, we need to approve the following items, the consent agenda. May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Hi, motion, we consider the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Gaynor, will you, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to welcome our new appointments that I see on the agenda. I think that's really exciting and I'm glad to see that we're filling those roles. I know that this has been, you know, a long time coming in some cases, so I think that that's great and welcome. So I'm hoping at some point before this meeting's over, we'll get to introduce some folks.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Jim, any comments?
No, I'm excited for the same reason. I'd like the introductions whenever you think it's gonna, whenever it's appropriate.
After the vote, I'll do the introductions.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the role?
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
So if I could, I'd like to introduce a few of our new administrators that are here with us this evening, and I'm so glad that you guys can make it. First, I'd like to introduce Kristen Riley. Kristen is the new principal of Boulevard Elementary School. Ms. Riley most recently served as the NTSS specialist for the South Yucatlan Hur School District. Prior to that, Ms. Riley worked in the Cleveland Metropolitan School District as a reading intervention teacher. She also served as an assistant principal in other school leadership roles in Texas.
Thank you.
Joined this evening by her parents.
Yes.
So glad you're welcome.
Welcome.
Next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Andrea Walker. Dr. Walker will be our new principal of Fairfax Elementary School. Dr. Walker comes to us from Twinsburg City Schools, where she worked as a director of student wellness. Dr. Walker also served the South Yucatlan Hur School District for 17 years as a principal, an assistant principal, and as a teacher.
Welcome back.
Welcome.
And finally, I'd like to reintroduce Dr. Mike Jenkins. Mike, Dr. Mike Jenkins will be taking on the role in the district as our director of curriculum and instruction. A very long career here in CHUH and in the state of Ohio. We're very excited that he will be leading us in this role. So welcome, Dr. Jenkins.
Welcome back.
Two days, three days, maybe?
It's like a week.
Week, okay.
So I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank the board for approving these appointments, but I would also like to thank our leadership team who led a very intense interview process. So if you participated in that, can you please stand, those of you who were on that team, the interview process as well? We have others, but this team has been working hard doing many, many, many things since school ended, and this is one of those very important things. So I want to thank you guys for your leadership and your insight and your careful deliberation as we've made the decisions and recommendations that you brought to me. It was really a no-brainer when I met the finalists, so thank you all.
Okay, so we're gonna turn it over to the superintendent?
Yes, and I will excuse our honored guests.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you all.
And our first presentation this evening will be led by Dr. Gould and her team on our second semester data. Not only has the team been engaged in principal and assistant principal interviews, they also have recently finished a pretty extensive building leadership team retreat that was lots and lots of work, was really great. Also, we recently, we just had our retreat as well. So we're fresh off of our superintendent's cabinet retreat that concluded two hours ago as well. So I'm glad we're able to make all this fit and all the things that we're doing, and looking forward to hearing the work and getting our hands on that information. So turning it over.
Thank you Superintendent Kirby. Thank you board members and Mr. Gaynor. We're here tonight to share some semester two academic updates and talk about the alignment of our work and our next steps. As always, we show our strategic plan, missions, goals, as well as our mission statement, just reminding ourselves that we want our students to be responsible citizens and succeed in college and career. The goal of the presentation this evening is truly to look at the strategic plan goals, some key performance indicators, and those key performance indicators around the data analysis that we'll look at this evening are attendance year-to-date, our chronic absentee rate around attendance. We'll look at early literacy, literacy as well as NWEA MAP, and we'll talk about the current ELA and math adoption and how they will support our next steps in the work. So as we begin, we'll, we will do all of our data analysis up front. Then we'll have information that will come from Ms. Karen Heinsberger, our instructional specialist for literacy, who will talk about ELA math. Of course, we have our data guru, Ms. Allison Byrd, who will be sharing all of the data this evening, and I will share some next steps in regards to the math adoption and some attendance items. And I'll turn it over to Allison.
All right, thank you, Dr. Gould. So we will begin by looking at the attendance rates for both the district and individual schools. So attendance rates are, are part of or impact strategic plan goal one. And you can see there's a specific line item for increasing the attendance of all students pre-K to 12. This particular graphic provides the district attendance rate trend performance over the last five years. When we think about attendance rate, we're talking about the aggregate percent of time that students are in attendance at school. For the graphic, we want it to trend upwards, so think of like the staircase or the stair step up. It is important to note that for school year 2019, 2020, where the rate was 92%, that's why the dot is darker, that would represent the year that the world shut down for COVID. So after March 16th, or as of March 16th, following the directions of the Ohio Department of Education, all of our students were marked present from March 16th through the close of the school year. So that does impact the value that you see there. In 2021, I was gonna say things were normal, but they weren't. We were still in a remote environment through the first half of the year and then started a hybrid schedule for the middle of January through February, getting into that routine. So 21, 22 would have been the year where we started back, started the school year all in person, and we are back to that upward trend. So the, the values that you saw on the previous slide, so right here, come from the Ohio Department of Education. So we collect the information in our student information system, which is Infinite Campus. We report that data to the state, and then they do publish it, sometimes include it in our report card, our state report card. So these are the final values for the district that are shared here. This slide is an internal measure that we use. We actually share attendance data weekly for our buildings. This particular graphic looks at attendance rates year-to-date every three weeks. This allows us to get an idea of what we might anticipate or we might see in terms of changes in performance so that we can respond to it before it has a negative impact. So again, in looking at it, the golden rod bars represent school year 22 and 23, so those would be our full year in-person years. So one of the things that we watched and we discussed over the course of the year is things like in week 30, we can see the, the light golden rod, which represents 21, 22, the, or from it, from week 27 to week 30, the attendance rate went from 88% to 86.9%. Well, when you look a little bit further, we realize that that marks the return from spring recess. So sharing that information with principals and with school teams prior to the break allowed them to be more responsive, more proactive, up the messaging, reminding families and staff, you know, of those reminders of the importance of attending school, and we were able to maintain the attendance rate. We did not see the drop that we saw last year. And then here, we're able to see it, it's a lot of information, so we went table route as opposed to trying to do a different graphic where we see the overall attendance rates for each one of the schools, and we can see that school attendance rates remained about the same or increased compared to the 21, 22 school year.
Hey, Allison, just, just so, this is defined as chronic?
This is actually the attendance rate, so I'm gonna speak to chronic absenteeism next.
Okay, good.
Won't even make you wait long, here we go. So chronic absenteeism, a student is considered chronically absent if they are absent 10% or more of their scheduled time. And it's important for us, we constantly remind everyone that this includes excused and unexcused absences. So this is a student not coming to school for medical reasons and/or a student not being marked present because they were in the cafeteria, right? So either, either absence, I guess, counts equally. So unlike the attendance rate information, we want the graphic or the data here to step down, so we want to see lower numbers for our chronic absenteeism rates. Again, when you see that drop from 26.4% in the, the 2019 school year, that would have been a quote-unquote typical year. The COVID closures occurred in 2019, 20, and then the partial year in 21. I think we were all surprised by the uptick in chronic absenteeism in that first year when we were all in person. But again, looking at our data, reviewing the supports that were in place for students and families who were able to course correct, and we see we're back on track for that decline in the overall chronic absenteeism rates.
Allison, can some of that be explained by the fact that people had to quarantine if they were exposed or if they were sick?
That would have been included, yes. And we actually still keep, the, the coding isn't used as much, so we don't hear as much reporting of specific, like, why students might be out in, in the 22, 23 school year, but definitely in 21 and 22.
Right, 'cause I remember that that was when the guidance was if somebody, you know, had been exposed, you had to stay out so many days, and if you tested positive, you had to stay out 10 days or something.
Correct.
Which that already puts you pretty close to being chronically absent if you have to stay out for 10 days.
Correct. So for us, we look at students are, they are enrolled in school and start, you know, day one and are with us through the very last day of school. That would be, you know, anywhere from 171, 172 school days. So for a student to miss 10 days, as you indicated, they're, they're on that path for being chronically absent because they would just have to miss 17 in order to be chronically absent for the full year.
Thank you.
So just like for the attendance rate, we see, this is an example of, again, an internal way that we monitor those rates, looking at changes every three weeks so that we can anticipate certain behaviors. So when we look again at the lighter golden rod for school year 21, 22, we can see from week 18, the chronic absenteeism rate last school year was 42%, and then we saw a spike up to 46%, which we never quite recovered from. This year, we see that the rates lowered slightly, and then we were able to maintain that drop as opposed to spiking upward. Because again, chronic is the one that we want to stair-step down.
Well, it builds too. I think that's because it includes 10 weeks, so it would really look low in the first part of the school year.
Right, so the longer students are enrolled, the more time that they have to course correct, right? So we do see, you know, we can see some higher numbers or some shifting in the start of the year, but as kids get into more of a routine, we can see them adjust that. And that is important to note that with chronic absenteeism, it's not a final value, right? Once you're identified as chronically absent, you, we can change that. There are things that can happen, like students, when they start attending regularly, we can positively impact their status. And here we have the chronic rates for individual schools over time. This was a great celebration. We, we work hard in everything that we do, but this one in particular, as everyone understands that, you know, students can't learn if they're not present, if they're not with us. So really pushing the strategies, trying to focus on what was within our control, and we're happy to report that chronic absenteeism rates decreased for all of the schools.
I really hate to single out schools, but you look at Noble, when they went from, what, 42 to 24? And we had a great presentation from Oxford earlier.
So we're focused, we're working hard, and it is, it's, it's, it's great to be able to see immediate and such strong changes.
Yeah.
So we'll pause to identify or to talk through next steps for attendance before moving on to the academic data.
Thank you, Allison. As Allison shared, it is a good celebration for us to have with attendance, to show our average daily rate where everyone increased, and for chronic absenteeism, all 11 schools decreased. We do see some decreases that are large, as you have pointed out in the presentation. But one of the things, as we look at our protocols and procedures, Allison and I worked very closely with our attendance teams. And so on the attendance teams, you have the attendance secretary, the principal, you have counselors, you have social workers, all of those people who are really doing the support around what is happening with students and their attendance. We have created an actual attendance manual for the district, and in this attendance manual, it talks about the information systems as well as the protocols and procedures and training that is needed for our staff when doing attendance in their schools. One of the other things is that, as Allison shared, we look at attendance every three weeks. We want to continue to look at both qualitative and quantitative information to truly examine what factors are really affecting our attendance. One of the things that we gather from the qualitative piece is that when we are talking to our attendance secretaries that are taking attendance, they are able to tell us many of the factors while parents are calling in for attendance and what those factors are there that are impacting their attendance rates, and how we code them in Infinite Campus so that we keep up with our protocols and procedures. Also, working with our principals to look, to work with our support professionals, which are our social workers and counselors, to review the tiers of support for attendance so that we take a look at what interventions and proactive measures that we can put in place prior to a student becoming chronic, or if we know students are already chronic, how do we work with them immediately, like during the summer or prior to them returning back to school? We will continue to provide a regular professional learning for all of our staff around data entry as well as attendance procedures. We are constantly refining and looking at our attendance procedures and our protocols and making sure that things are coded properly as well as how attendance is being taken. With the data review, again, as we talked about, looking at this every three weeks to really look at trends, to see if we are seeing, see if we are seeing anything that is impacting our school, as Allison ported out, pointed out, one of the things we noticed, of course, is spring recess. So we really talk to our principals about revisiting those attendance procedures, re-emphasizing a message to parents about being on time and in school, and to continue to monitor our weekly data deck on the attendance by district, school, and grade level. One of the celebrations we have here is that we do have a district initiative where we do a district-wide attendance campaign. Superintendent Kirby always has the opportunity to take the trophy around to the schools, so we create that competitive culture that they like. And so this year, for best elementary school attendance was Canterbury, and the most improved attendance was both Oxford and Roxboro Middle School.
But we don't see a drop in attendance when we come back from winter recess, just spring?
We see some in winter, but they have that time in January and February, and so we start to see some of those kids who were chronic before start to fall off of the list.
And Dr. Gould, what are some of the factors that causes the, you know, chronic attendance?
We hear things like transportation a lot, you know, cars, school buses, those type of things. Some of it is my first period class not getting there on time, those type of things as well.
Well, I also think we've heard stories about, we've got a family and there's a older person in the household that has to take care of the younger ones, and they just can't get to school on time, quick enough. Dan Heinz is not here this evening. I know he and Molly have important things that are going on tonight. Dan is doing an AP, I'm gonna ask a question that Dan would ask.
Oh, no problem.
So that's why I'm sort of explaining. Dan is doing AP training down in Columbus for his, his real job required, and then Molly's spouse is getting inducted to an Inventors Hall of Fame in Washington DC. I think the national, it's kind of a big deal. So that's why she's, she's not here. But one of Dan's concerns that he brought up in the past was the way these things are coded in Infinite Campus, and the, your attendance next step talked about data systems and things. Is that, and I don't recall if it was actually a problem or not, but it was something that I know he was alarmed about, about how he was concerned about it takes time to get these things coded and coded right so they're meaningful. Do you think the improvements that we've seen are because we're coding better, or do we actually think kids are actually in the seats more?
I'm not aware of the coding problem. We, we, we haven't had, we haven't discussed a coding problem.
Not a coding problem, maybe.
Incorrecting attendance, maybe?
That's not the, yeah. Problem is not the word I should have used. I think it was more like an understanding of how to code something correctly from, like, a teacher perspective.
So when, when teachers record attendance, they actually have three options, present, absent, or tardy.
Okay.
And then that information is shared with the office staff, who then work to communicate with the families to, to get a greater understanding of, well, your child isn't here, why aren't they here? Which might be some of the connection to the coding, so are, you know, are they sick? Or parents will call in and indicate, my child is sick, or they have a medical appointment, or, you know, there's an issue with transportation, and that, they will then enter a specific code that lets us know, gives us greater detail into the, the type of absence. So with our ongoing training of school staff, we meet with them monthly to get that feedback. So, you know, how is it going? What kinds of things are you hearing? Do the codes, like, are you able to, to translate the, the responses that you're receiving from families to the existing codes? And we have made some adjustments just in terms of what they might enter input, or, or asking for follow-up information from the family to verify, that's a requirement for the state, but just to ver, to verify why a student may be out.
Okay. That, that helps, thanks.
I was gonna say, and one of our biggest thing is just reemphasizing to parents to make sure if a student is out, that they call in so that we can put a code in there for that particular student about the, the reasons or rationales why they're out.
Okay.
And before you move forward with your presentation, would you like us to ask questions at the end, or is it okay for us to jump in?
We're fine.
Okay.
So now we'll move on to early literacy, and we will turn it over to Karen. Oh, is this still, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we still have data. I'm sorry.
We're actually going to focus on early literacy, looking at percentage of students who are on track in reading, and then we'll talk about NWEA MAP performance in both English Language Arts and Mathematics. And then Karen and, or Mrs. Heinsberg and then Dr. Gould will wrap up with next steps around academics. Well, you'll have some insight into the, the new English Language Arts materials and get some insight into plans related to mathematics. So for early literacy, this, we use Acadia into Reading as the instrument to determine where students are in terms of grade level reading. It was formally referred to as DIBELS Next. The test has to be administered in the first 20 days for kindergarten students, and we'll say approximately the first 30 days for the other grades, and that would be first grade, second grade, and third grade. The visual that you see right here is an aggregate of the percentage of students identified as on track in their reading over the last five years. Again, the golden rod, so it's important, I did mention that the test is administered and the initial status is identified at the start of the school year. So although we had COVID in 2019, 20, the assessment was given and the student status was identified at the start of the year and was not impacted by COVID. You do see the golden rod dot for school year 21, and that's just the reminder that we were school year 21. And that's just the reminder that we were fully remote during the administration of this assessment and we conducted it remotely. So that is a difference in the administration compared to the other years that are there. And it's not to say that that may or may not have impacted performance, but just a change in terms of the administration and an opportunity to say thank you to the staff who worked to give that test online because it is more than a notion to do so. Again, 22 and 23, back in person, and we can see the percentage of students remaining about the same. Just why the next graphic is important? Because it allows us to drill down by specific grade level. So using that same color coding and thinking the two Goldenrod years, 22 and 23 represent full year in person, where the lighter, the two middle gray would be the immediate COVID experience. And then you have 18, 19 in there, which would be your truly typical pre-COVID experience. This graphic allows us to look at different students over multiple years. So when you see that kindergarten performance, that's actually five different cohorts of kindergarteners, five different cohorts of performance. So we're looking at where they're starting or how they're coming into the district in terms, or coming into that school year in terms of their, their reading skills.
Do we have to read this diagonally down?
Well, I'm gonna skip to the next slide.
There you go.
This may be a little bit easier. This one allows us to see perform, or to follow cohort performance. So it's the exact same information, but it allows us to see cohort performance. So when we think the kindergartners of 1920 that started off the school year, where 85% of them were identified as being on-track readers. We can see when they started first grade, that's the same cohort of students. We now see 46% of them are on-track for reading as first graders. And now, again, 22, we see significant improvement, 65%, and then 66% in third grade. So the previous slide does try to give some indication of that. You can see, when you just look at it, different cohorts of students over time, there seems to be like this up and down. But when we can follow the same cohort, we're better able to, you know, kind of highlight some things that are of importance. And it's not to say, so when you look at the kindergartners who started last year, they started off a little bit higher, coming in with 79% of them being identified as on-track for reading. And we're still seeing that like slip in, or that shift in performance as they start the first grade. So our next level of work is to really understand, like, okay, so let's continue to fine tune that, what is happening with the shift in skills and the expectations that our first graders need. This takes us to NWEA MAP. Again, connected to GO1 Student Outcomes. This is an internal measure that we use in the district as a means to monitor student performance in the areas of English Language Arts and Mathematics. We use it for a number of reasons, but one of the big ones is that it is a predictor of performance for students on the Ohio State Test. We monitored two data points for MAP. One is the number and percentage of students performing at or above the national norm. So here what you see, just looking at current school year, we administer the test three times a year. So we see fall performance, winter, and spring. Here, we've chosen to do an aggregate, again, based on the test that's, and grade level that students are enrolled in. So when we look at this, what we're able to see for grades two through five, again, in the area of English Language Arts, at the start, the first test administration, 46% of students success were at or above the national norm. And then we saw that shift to 48%. And then it remained the same for the spring administration at 48%. And again, we see the performance for our high school students there. The next couple of slides allow us to drill down to look at individual grade levels. So the lighter gray represents fall and winter, and then the color represents the most recent administration, which would be the spring administration. So we've had conversations internally about, like, how frequently the test is administered, what information does it tell us. And again, really, good conversations about how we're using the information throughout the year. When we look at like third grade in particular, so we can see the lightest bar shows us that 45% of third graders were at or above the national norm for the first assessment. The second administration in the winter, we also made a change and the winter administration occurred earlier this year so that teachers would have more time to respond to the data that they received from the test. We see 49% of third graders were at or above the norm. And then to close out the spring administration, we see an even higher percentage of 56% of the students were identified as at or above the norm. Again, so that connects to a predictor of performance on the state test, gives us some insight into adjustments that we may need to make in terms of high-quality instructional materials and sequencing of content that is taught. And this graphic just shows the same information but for the middle school grades and then the freshman and sophomore cohorts. The next three slides provide information around MAP performance on the mathematics tests. So this year, actually in previous years, we heard from staff members that we needed additional information for our youngest students in the area of mathematics. We did not have a diagnostic tool for math performance in kindergarten, first grade, or second grade. So this year, we started with, by adding in first grade and second grade. For the start of the 23, 24 school year, we'll incorporate or add on kindergarten students as well. So the kindergarten and grade one students take one test. That's why you see their information separate. Students in grades two through five take the, they refer to it as the Math Two to Five Test. And then when we get to the middle school and high school grades, for our middle school students who are not taking high school credit math, they will take the, what's called the Math Six Plus to represent, you know, sixth, seventh, eighth grade test. And if students are enrolled in an Algebra I or Geometry class, there is a course-specific MAP test that they take. So it gets them closer to the skills and standards that they need to master for those specific courses. Drilling down, we can see performance by grade level for the elementary levels. And again, that third grade group stands out where we see that increased performance with each administration, or increasing the percentage, the number and percentage of students who are at or above the norm. And then here are our middle school grades, their performance over time, or with each testing administration for mathematics based on the test that they are taking. So that concludes the, just the review of the raw data. And I'm gonna hand it back over to Dr. Gould and Mrs. Heinsberg to give you additional information about our curricular materials and next steps.
Questions?
I have one. And are we seeing, is there any, okay, so it's kind of hard to unpack this, okay? And you may need to get back to me on it, or back to us on it. But are we seeing a bubble where, you know, the kids that have, the newer kids that are getting into the system with the newer curriculums that we have and the process improvements and all that, are we starting to see a bubble forming where we're seeing higher performance at the lower grades as they move through the system? And when we look at existing high schoolers who have not experienced all those sort of best practices and curriculums that we've been deploying, I guess we're starting to see a bubble of improvement, a step up across everything. It's sort of like the diagonal blocks going down in the one slide that you showed with us, Allison. I mean, it's too, I guess, I guess what I'm hoping to hear is over an eight-year period of time, I mean, and it's hard because COVID was smack in the middle of this whole thing. I mean, are we putting the systems in place to, you know, lift up the kids that have been in this district? But you would think that the newer kids that are in the district should be performing better with all these systems improvements and curriculums and the work that we've been doing. You would think you would see that start compounding over time. Whereas the kids that have been in the district that have not had that experience, that are, are older kids, is there any way to measure that?
I think there are multiple factors that involve, that are involved. So I wouldn't want to jump to say, to identify a single reason or to maybe think about it in terms of younger students and the changes in the curriculum are, are the causes of it. I'll borrow a line from one of my colleagues who says, like, the younger students are, like, the less information that they need to master and the more time that they have to do so. So it's like the gap is the smallest as they are the youngest. And as they get older, there's more and more information that they have to remember and to retain. I think one of the, and we're, I think we're seeing some of that in, like, when we look at our reading diagnostic performance and looking at that, those subskill, the subtests and what skills are required for students and why we might see this change in performance. I think overall, what we're getting stronger in is really understanding what students need and meeting those needs, whether they've been with us for, you know, five months or five years or, you know, have been with us from kindergarten through 12th grade. And my colleagues will talk about it. When we think about the professional learning and how we're sharing information, the structures that we're putting in place in terms of collecting and analyzing data, reviewing student performance, explicit instruction, so instructional strategies that we're using, we're just getting closer and closer to really being able to identify what each student needs.
Do you also think we sometimes see testing fatigue when we're doing testing three times a year? And then by towards the fall and the spring especially, we might start to see some testing fatigue out of students?
Go ahead.
You're welcome.
No, you go ahead.
So this is a question, again, when I think about structures in place and the way that we are working to provide feedback to each other, this was a question that we dialogued with our school leaders about to say, you know, so what are some of the benefits and maybe distractors of administering that spring MAP test? And they talked through the ways in which they use the information, the ways in which their staff use their information. And the, and in those conversations, like, and looking at like third grade performance in particular. So in both English Language Arts and Mathematics, we didn't, we actually saw an improvement while maintaining close to 100% participation in the actual test administration. When you think about third graders, they have more tests than anybody else because they have the fall OST, they have a reading diagnostic test, right? So they're, they're taking even more tests. But I think the key is how the adults communicate the importance of the information that we receive from it, sharing that information with families, and then making it actionable. So how are we adjusting, again, what we're, what supports we're providing to students? Because as long as we're doing that, then we, we work to make it fit. And it's when we have more difficulty, like seeing the importance of the test that we're giving and using the information immediately to make change in terms of our instructional supports, that we think about, well, maybe the results aren't giving us what we need, or maybe we're seeing what we're seeing because students are tired. So it is an ongoing conversation that we have with, like, how are we using the results? Are we finding it beneficial? Do we need to make a change? And we've done that in other areas in terms of assessment. And so we'll talk about that at the start of next year.
And then we even think about third grade also has a high stakes attached to it as well.
Yep, correct.
About students being retained.
Right.
All right. So as we move into our high-quality materials, we want to talk a little bit about the research that goes along with high-quality materials. All of our materials that we're using in our curriculum adoption are high-quality instructional materials. They have been reviewed and graded very high by EDU reports. And one of the things that we wanted to just make sure that everyone is aware of is that when using high-quality instructional materials, they can yield improvements in student learning outcomes equal to or greater than many of the interventions that are often more costly. And when they, what they're speaking of is that interventions that we can bring into our schools, like other programs and interventions, instead of our staff doing the interventions with the materials that they have. Also, they create a common foundation. It's that common language of how we organize our classrooms at the classroom level and how we collaborate. So how teachers are really coming together to talk about instruction as well as collaborate on the things they need to do in order to move students forward in those interventions and around just that whole thought process around the science of reading. As well as the research also shows that it can gain months of learning when teachers use stronger instructional materials. And we really have emphasized through our professional learning that we're doing, the usage of the materials and the importance of that. And Karen will get into more detail in regards to what our materials look like and how we're using those in order to gain the instructional success that, academic success that we want to see, as well as allow students to engage more deeply and meaningful toward the standards, making it more relevant and making sure that students understand and have that level of mastery that they need in order to move to the next level.
Thank you, Dr. Gould. So as you know, for the 23, 24 school year, we have put into place high-quality instructional materials for ELA at a Tier One level, a Tier Two level, and a Tier Three level. So if you notice, the Tier One level is also known as the Core, and that's the largest portion of the triangle at the bottom. The Tier Two is in the center of the triangle and the Tier Three is at the top. So Tier One instruction, known as the Core, includes the teaching and learning that's experienced by all students. Wonders will be used in grades K through five to support comprehension. In kindergarten, Hagerty's Bridge to Reading will be the instructional program that supports phonics. In grades one to five, 95% groups' Core Phonics program will be in the instructional program that supports phonics. Savas My Perspectives is the ELA English Tier One High Quality Instructional Material that will be in place for students in grades six through 12. All of the programs in Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three have a structured literacy approach, the approach that is supported by the science of reading research. A structured literacy approach has several characteristics. It's systematic, it's sequential, and it is explicit. We have been employing explicit instruction elements since February of 2019, just before we closed down for the pandemic. Tier Two instruction is provided for students who need more time to practice skills. In elementary school, we will have the phonics lesson library and comprehension to use with the students who need that extra practice. The language routines and manipulatives will be the same as those used in Tier One instruction. Think of this, using this analogy of riding a bike. We will support the students using the same bicycle each time that we practice. We will hold on to the seat and we're gonna run along the same street, making no changes, but just increase that time to practice. In middle school and high school, some students need more support with phonics in order to lift the words off the page. We are putting into place the rewards program. This program was written by Dr. Anita Archer, who is the author of the book entitled Explicit Instruction. We will be able to provide additional support to students who need even more guidance and time to acquire phonics skills to independently read through the use of the 95RAP and at the elementary level and Language Live at the middle school level for Tier Three instruction. To prepare teachers for the implementation of high-quality instructional materials, we are offering publisher-led professional learning opportunities during the summer. Two additional days of planning. professional learning opportunities during the summer, two additional days of planning time in August, and a virtual option on August 17th. This way, every teacher has had a hands-on training in preparation for the 2324 school year. So why is all of this important? It's to guarantee that 100% of our students read at or above grade level. This slide is a visual metaphor of what it takes to be able to read. In 2001, Hollis Scarborough created what's commonly known as Scarborough's Rope. And you can see it's really attached to the science of reading. So here's a quick explanation. This graphic shows two main components that are necessary in order to be a successful reader. The components are decoding, as shown in the warm colored braids, and comprehension, shown in the cool colored braids. In order to read at any level, a person has to be able to lift the words off the page and say them in their mind. That's the decoding work. That's the decoding part in work, and that's indicated by the warm colors. It's not enough, though, just to be able to pull those words off the page. You have to be able to understand what it is you're reading as well and make meaning of those words. So many skills are taken and braided together in order to support the brain in making meaning, including how much you already know about a topic and how an author's organized the text. Readers become increasingly more strategic at lifting these words off the page and making meaning as they learn. And we're using our high quality instructional materials in a very strategic way to address the skills both in the bottom of the rope and the skills represented in the top of the rope. So let's take a look at how Wonders will support the students in acquiring skills represented in the top of the rope. You have a handout in front of you that has the purple colors on it, and this is going to guide you through this visual on the right-hand side of the slide. As essential questions are introduced within the program, the teacher models thinking using a specific text. This usually takes place in the form of a read aloud, and the teacher will share their thoughts through a think aloud. Teachers are showing students how to make meaning from a text. It's similar to watching someone ride a bike. In explicit instruction, we call this the I do portion of the lesson because the teacher's doing the work. The shared reading portion of the lesson continues with the teacher modeling and sharing how to closely read a text, looking for key ideas and details. The same text is then reexamined in the we do portion of the lesson. Here, a small part of the text is selected for a specific person, purpose, usually to highlight the author's craft and or structure of the text. Students and teachers explore this part of the text together. They ask questions, they reread the text, they think, and they write about the text. After modeling and working together, students then have the opportunity to independently interact with the text. They move into the you do phase of learning. This is when students annotate the text, ask questions, make connections, and record their thinking on their own. The use of an I do, we do, you do, gradual release of responsibility provides the training wheels, the hold on to your seat support, and the practice necessary to ride or read on your own. Secondary students have much the same experience as indicated by your other handout, which is multicolored. It has a front and a back. Might you have questions about Wonders and explicit instruction? I was asked to pause. Or maybe you just wanted to breathe. Maybe I did.
Okay. That's what I saw, rereading, was like, maybe you had a question or something.
No.
Okay.
It's okay. I needed to breathe.
Trying to get my paper out to look at.
There you go. Thanks for the little break. So secondary students have the same experience with this gradual release of responsibility. In the highlighted green area, you're going to see that the teacher's doing the heavy lifting, the teacher's doing the think aloud, the teacher's modeling how to annotate text, how to notice, make connections, and respond. Some of the same close reading strategies that you heard about in Wonders. During the we do portion of the unit shaded in the turquoise section, students work in collaborative groups with new texts and engage on their own in the group, annotating, noticing, connecting, and responding. The teacher facilitates the students' collaboration and provides feedback to groups and individuals. Finally, time is carved out of the unit for students to annotate, notice, connect, and respond with texts individually, and that's highlighted by the light blue color. Through the use of routines and consistent language that are explicitly taught, students will have the tools necessary to be strategic readers. Teachers have the support to implement these programs in lots of ways. Our tier one for all of our staff, we have had materials sent in the spring and in the summer. K3 teachers had the opportunity to have some initial training in May. We have the multiple opportunities in the summer and on August 17th to help teachers prepare to use these high quality instructional materials on the first day. We have scheduled learning coming up to coincide with our grade level team meetings and additional learning in smaller groups for principals, instructional coaches, and building leaders, some of whom who have been at our trainings already this summer. Our tier two support includes feedback from principals during their observations, the work that instructional coaches are able to do at the building sites, collaboration in a teacher-based team when teachers are talking with one another, and during our grade level team meeting learning times.
And although we have all of these items in place, we wanted to just highlight that there is some legislation that has just been introduced. House Bill 117 has been introduced around the third grade reading guarantee. This bill has some changes that will impact all school districts because it will require that state testing be taken one time of year. Currently, our third graders take a test in October and then again in the spring. This will require them to only take it in the spring. It would also have the elimination of the retention unless there is parent consent around retention. It would also expand us teaching phonics from not just third grade, but also fourth and fifth grade. This really aligns to our curriculum adoption because in tier two, we have 95% group, which we're using as our phonics materials. And so we already have those things in place to support our students. What it would extend is what we call RIMPs or Reading Improvement Plans that must be monitored for our students in fourth and fifth grade, not just our third grade students as well. And this legislation will apply to both public and private schools.
So when you say elimination of retention without the parent consent, so that's eliminating the third grade guarantee?
Yes. That them being retained without passing the test, but if a parent wishes for them to be retained, then they can be retained.
Okay.
So this would also impact our board policy for us as well.
So this is finally a bill that will be to our advantage. This House bill.
Has its pros and cons.
Say some parts of it and some parts not necessarily.
So just wanted to make sure that we keep that on our radar. So as we move into our math adoption here. So during the 202324 school year, we will be piloting three materials, Envision, Into Math, and Reveal. Here you can see where we have our programs, our timeframe, who and what teachers will be piloting, and the timeframe they're piloting in both our elementary and middle school. We are piloting Envision and Into Math with our elementaries during our quarter two and with our secondary teachers. We are very mindful that elementary teachers will be learning a new ELA program and kept the pilot to one quarter. At the elementary, each grade level will have one team for each pilot. At the secondary level, each level course will pilot two of the three programs. Secondary piloting teachers receive the training and planning day at the end of May, and elementary teachers will receive their training and planning day in October. So we've started some of this work and will continue to move into the fall. As I stated, we are very mindful that our staff are or will be implementing the new ELA curriculum. As we look at our math pilot information, as I shared before, we vetted all of our materials through EDG reports and has rated each of our piloting programs as meets expectations on all three domains. Those three domains are focus and coherence, rigor and mathematical practices, and usability. They can click on the picture of the program and it will take you to the EDG reports, but to that one. The programs are aligned with explicit instruction. At least one feature in each of the 13 elements. The first domain is content, and the programs are focused on critical content, which is in element one. The next domain would be instruction, and there is ample guided practice, we do, and checks for understanding under you do, just like Karen just explained in the ELA portion. The next domain is delivery of instruction. These programs have embedded opportunities for frequent student responses, active participation. Some even say turn and talk, even in the actual curriculum. And the last domain is practice, and they have plenty of practice problems that can be reached in a variety of ways and levels, online, worksheets, textbooks, and most come with three levels, including supporting and challenging problems as well. And so many of our teachers are very excited in regards to our ELA adoption, and we are seeing the enthusiasm around our math adoption. And I really have to thank our curriculum and instruction team and all of our teachers. They have really given us great feedback on these materials and are really excited about rolling out these materials in the fall with students. And we also have Rebecca McDonald, who has been integral along with Joyce Bukovic in the math adoption, and of course, you know, Karen and Takara and Kristi have been doing a lot around the ELA adoption. So that concludes our updates. Are there any additional questions?
So for the math pilot, when would you be making a recommendation to us on what to adopt for math?
That will begin in spring. We decide in February for three reads, we brought the ELA here.
The same way we did. It would be like along the same timeline as we did for ELA, the January, and then we would have the three reads.
Okay, okay. And that will give us enough time with quarter two. What's the timeframe on quarter two for elementary? If teachers are doing their pilot training October 17th and 18th, so quarter two must be like November, December?
Yeah, like the beginning of November, and then it ends like a week or two into January, but we'll be wrapping up our pilot right before that for our meeting.
Okay.
Just to kind of tease us out a bit, because it is different how the elementary is piloting math versus the secondary. So am I correct in saying all of the secondary teachers are piloting, whereas in the elementary, it's like a team?
That is correct.
Right? So it's a, and I think it's good. It's a bigger pilot in secondary. So yeah, I just wanted to point that out versus a smaller team.
Right. And secondary is longer, it's a whole semester?
That's correct.
Versus a quarter?
It's a whole semester. We were mindful that our elementary teachers will be doing ELA, and our secondary teachers will not be having a new platform to learn and utilize. So we wanted to make sure that we had a longer period.
You have elementary teachers who teach more than one subject as opposed to more content based than our secondary level as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Are there any other questions? We will conclude part one. Thank you so much for the team for presenting, preparing, explaining, and being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
I'm excited to turn it, oh, you'll do that.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to turn, I'm going to turn it over to Scott for our budget component.
All right.
Because we haven't had enough numbers tonight.
I'm sorry?
We haven't had enough numbers tonight.
I know, so you need a few more, right? Well, the good thing is, you know, this should be relatively brief, only because this is a process you've seen before several times over. So I will kind of walk through it quickly, just for the benefit of the folks that are viewing at home. But you should have four documents in front of you. I went ahead and printed these out. I thought they might be easier to look at and to cross-reference if you had a hard copy. So you have a five-year, a current five-year forecast that you have already approved for this month. That is the single sheet five-year forecast for the month of June. You also have another document that is a single-page fiscal year 23 final appropriations. You have a document that is fiscal '24 temporary appropriations, which, once we're done here, we'll ask you to approve. And then the last document is the bigger one, and that is the general fund budget document. Again, in the format that you've seen before, this is the same, same kind of document. At any rate, so very quickly, and I'll kind of share this in the screen as we go as well, but all these documents are in board docs as well for folks to review at their leisure. So we started the budget process back in March. As you know, this is one of the big pieces of Eric's job. Eric Soltes, our assistant treasurer, spends months putting the budget document together, compiling the budget, reviewing the budget. So although the majority of our budget is salary and benefits, as you recall, these non-salary items that we spend a whole lot of time on, not as large a part of the budget, but require a lot of attention to detail because these are the things that the auditors look at when they come in and do their testing. So the budget document itself, again, you've seen this document before. It does lay out the process in terms of what we do and how we do it. But by and large, in a nutshell, what happens is Eric has created a template for all of our budget managers and department heads to use. He sends that out to everyone. It has all the coding that they would typically use in any given year, and depending on the size of their budget and the size of the department, that could be, you know, anywhere from 10 to 100 different lines of code. And then we ask those budget managers to use zero-based budgeting, meaning that they have no budget, but really they're to tell us what it is that they need for the upcoming school year. And we do, you know, we do provide some guidance. We do provide, I guess, kind of a guideline allocation that kind of fits within the five-year forecast so that they can have some parameters to work with. But again, we're really looking for that zero-based budgeting notion. So the budget managers fill out that template. All of that comes back to Eric. He starts to compile that, and then we do a review. We look at trend data. We look at a lot of different information to see if there's something that looks like it might need to be changed, like if there might have been some kind of an error, you know, test the validity of the, and accuracy of the coding and what was, what has been budgeted, but also just looking to see if there's something that from a purely analytical perspective might look off. So he did a nice job this year, and I know that, you know, Liz got to see this firsthand. I've creating a document that showed all the vendors that a budget manager would typically use and how much was spent with each vendor over a three-year period, as well as trend data for three years and all their budget line items. And so he and I met with all the budget managers to go over that, to see if there were some things that we, that jumped out at us in terms of an analytical review, and if there was something that we wanted to change there or question or discuss. So the process took a little longer this year than it typically would. In fact, the temporary appropriations you have are hot off the presses today. But, you know, I think it was valuable because we were able to ask some hard questions, have some good conversations about the budget, and, you know, some things that might have jumped out at us as, you know, why is this line item this when we see, you know, a three-year history of something different than that? So we have all that back. We've compiled the budget document, or I should say Eric has compiled the budget document. Then what will happen is after board approval, he will load all of this data into the system. And even what you're seeing here follow U S, U SASS, the Uniform School Accounting System, you know, that there are various dimensions to each line item, so you'll have a fund, kind of a pot of money, you'll have a function, which could be, you know, saying it's something instructional versus something that's business services or something else. You have an object that'll say it's a, a utility versus supplies and materials. You have an operational unit, telling you which building that, that the budget's at. All those different pieces and parts are all part of the budget, and we budget to various levels depending on what, you know, what, what the budget is and what that calls for. So, but that is dictated by the state. And so even though he has to put in all of that detail, we roll it up, roll it up into this budget document, which you, again, you see by building and by department, but then also at the board level, what you approve is the appropriations or budget at the fund level. And really, the reason we do that is every time there's a change to the appropriations, we have to send something to the county to say, okay, we've made a change to the appropriations. They have to go through their process to say, okay, well, you have not exceeded your estimated revenue, then they send something back to us. And so the, the finer that we would have the board approve it, then the less flexibility we have to move money between accounts within budgets. So if, for example, a budget manager needed to buy a supply versus professional development or some kind of change they might want to make with that, we would have to be coming to the board with every one of those budget adjustments, which, although we have to make them in the system, is probably not the best, best use of, of your time and, and effort. So at any rate, so we have the board approving at the fund level, so I want to just show you quickly how these tie together. So you have the five-year forecast, and you see, first of all, I want to point out that with the budget that you see for fiscal year twenty-three, meaning the one that's currently ending, you see expenditures here, a hundred and twelve million, and I highlighted these numbers actually on your hard copy sheet. So you see a hundred and twelve million dollars in fiscal year twenty-three, that's the final appropriation for this fiscal year, that's what you approved in the consent agenda. The number right next to it is a hundred and twelve million nine fifteen, so that is the proposed appropriation for next fiscal year, that's what we'll ask you to approve You know, that is a temporary, so you approve it now so that we can start the fiscal year July one, but you do have to approve that per, as a permanent appropriation by the end of September. So we'll be bringing it back to you again in September for a permanent approval. You, you might recall, some of you have been around for a longer time, that we used to just do twenty-five percent of the current year appropriation, that used to be the temporary that we would start the fiscal year out with. But through this process now, we actually try to get as close as we possibly can to a permanent appropriation as the temporary to start the year out. But there could be minor adjustments to that, but I would expect that the hundred and twelve million nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that you see for general fund appropriations for fiscal year twenty-four is where we will be in terms of spending, unless something crazy would happen with the state biennial budget, which is entirely possible, but this five-year forecast, you'll remember, assumes flat funding from the state. So as long as they don't decrease anything, we're good, and if they increase anything or phase in the fair school funding plan a little more, then we'll be in better shape than what you see in the forecast. But you will note that as of this, at this point in time, we have a positive cash balance through fiscal twenty-seven, which is that five million oh eighty-eight eighteen at the, at the very bottom right-hand corner. This doesn't have any of the ESAR money at all on it, does it? Not. So the ESAR money is totally excluded from, from this forecast. So this is strictly general fund in the five-year forecast. The ESAR money you do see in the appropriations documents that you have, the two single-pagers, that's fund, so you'll see the general fund at the hundred and twelve million or the hundred and twelve million nine fifteen for this year, but the ESAR money is Fund Five-O-Seven. So if you look, the fund numbers are along the left-hand side, you go down to Five-O-Seven, elementary and secondary, school emergency relief fund, temporary appropriation, fiscal twenty-four, it's just over seven million dollars. So that's what we anticipate having left in ESAR for the next school year. And then that grant is done, so this will be the third year of that ESAR fund. So I'm, I'm looking at the five-year forecast under just sort of the total receipts and then total expenditures. I mean, those numbers are almost equal. Mm-hmm. They are. Which, you know, i- is, it's, it's interesting, because it's kind of where we are based on the point in the levy cycle that we're in, and also using some of that early ESAR money to supplant, to kind of stretch the levy cycle out as we've done. But what, what one would expect over the course of your levy cycle is, in the first year, you're spending less than you're bringing in, and in the second year, you're spending about what you're bringing in, then you start spending more than you're bringing in, and that's when it tells you that you need to go for a new levy. What you might recall too, we've been talking about with our legislators, and they've been fussing about, is they look at that bottom line on that forecast, and they're saying, well, we don't need to increase the fair school funding at all, because look at this, you know, you have an ending cash balance of twenty-nine million dollars in fiscal twenty-three, twenty-seven million dollars in twenty-four, you know, you're sitting on a lot of cash, and so we, you don't need any more state funding, is, is really their argument, when really this is a result of us stretching the levy cycle. You know, the board made that commitment early on, that we were going to stretch this levy cycle out at least five years. And so in doing that, and in supplanting early with some of that ESAR money for continuity of services, we, you know, we would end up spending what we're bringing in, to Jim's point, and we would, you know, be maintaining a cash balance. Now, you see it starting to drop as the levy cycle goes on, but that's, that's what would be expected, and, and, you know, the legislature wants to say, well, that's okay, but you really don't need, you really don't need that, that fair school funding to the degree that you think you do. So that's kind of the argument we're, we're fighting now, you know, the, the professional organizations have all written a white paper on that matter to talk about not only how the levy cycle works, why it's a good thing to have a cash balance that's not, you know, just down to five million dollars, I mean, that's, that's one month's payroll for us. And, and also how, for example, your bond rating agencies will downgrade you if they don't see, you know, a good cash balance, and so that costs taxpayers in terms of having to pay more interest for any kind of bond issue that they would kind of, that they would try to make, so at any rate. So that's kind of where we are with the fi, with the five-year forecast, with the appropriations, where we're ending. You know, you also see in fiscal twenty-two, we had about three and a half million dollars in encumbrances. At last count, I think we're about at that same amount of money, which is purchase orders we're carrying over from this year to the next year, so that number will move over into fiscal twenty-three when we close out this year, and, and, you know, the three and a half gets carried over into fiscal twenty-four. Any questions about, like, you know, the budget process, or, you know, any of the sp, any of the specific numbers that we have? Again, this is, this is something that's, you know, nothing, nothing much has changed in this process, other than a kind of an additional layer of review happened this year than, than what's previously happened and some additional analysis, but by and large, the, the processes have been largely the same, the document remains the same, and, you know, the point being that we wanted to make sure that you could see clearly that both the appropriations that were ending for fiscal twenty-three, the hundred and twelve million ties to the five-year forecast, and the fiscal year twenty-four temporaries that we're asking for of a hundred and twelve million nine fifteen also ties to the five-year forecast, and that, you know, this is where we stand in terms of the fiscal twenty-seven ending balance of still over five million dollars. No, it makes a lot of sense to me. I mean, the, I'm gonna talk about auditing for a second. Sure. And, you know, there was some talk about getting a release, so we'd be able to have our own auditor come in. Yes. As opposed to using the state. Is that still? It is, it's done. The audit, the auditor has been selected. It is Ray and Associates came in as the preferred candidate. I think we had five, five firms that bid for the audit, and you go through a process where the state ranks them based on, they had twenty different criteria. Ray and Associates ended up having the best proposal, the least number of hours, the lowest cost, but what I would have said was actually the most professional proposal. We also use Ray and Associates currently for our Medicaid audit that we have to have on an annual basis, so we're familiar with them. And so the state rated them the highest, then we get ten discretionary points where, you know, we, based on the district's analysis, we can put those points where, on whichever firm we, we like. And so based upon our review, we also thought Ray and Associates was the, the firm that we would. So the decision process that you go through includes the state? It's, yes, and it's actually facilitated by the state. And truly, I want to say eighty out of the ninety points that they get assigned in the rubric are the states. So they're, they're making the decision. We, with the ten points that we get, depending on how close all the firms are, sometimes you can sway it one way or another, and actually, the firms were relatively close this time around, so, but we did have some influence, but really the state, based on what they see in the proposals that are submitted, they're the ones who, you know, will make the call on which firm, and then, at, you know, in this case, we actually agreed with them in terms of which firm seemed to be the most experienced, had the largest presence, the least amount of hours to do the audit, and the best price was Ray and Associates. So, so they'll come in, they'll do the audit, just as the auditor state would, following the same criteria, they have to follow the, the book that the auditors provide with all the same testing, but they, they have, in the private firms in our experience are a little, what's that, what's the most PC way to put it? They, they, they understand the concept of materiality, so they're not going to fuss about, you know, a lot of these minor things that the auditor state tends to fuss about. You know, if they see something, they still have to report it, just as the auditor state would, but they're, they're not looking for those things, you know, they have their threshold, they have their materiality based on the size of your budget, they go through their audit procedures, they do the same testing, but they seem to be much more efficient based on the number of hours. You know, the auditor state would come here and camp for six months at a time to do the audit, and in our estimation, and one of the reasons we wanted to get away from them was that they were very inefficient, and so most districts will tell you that their experience with private auditors is that they're, they're much more efficient in their process. So, and based on the hours that were proposed in, in the audit, we would, we would expect that's definitely going to be the case. Okay. So same result, though, you know, their, their audit gets submitted to the state, the state does their, does kind of an overall review of everything, and, you know, we're still eligible for the same awards that the state would have, you know, given us had, you know, had they done the review, same consequences if, you know, they find any issues, all that good stuff. It's just that we actually have independent auditors out doing the testing versus state groups. And honestly, I think the state group probably had some issues with staffing as well, you know, they've, as, as a lot of the firms are having now too, but, so we're excited about that, excited about the, the independent auditors coming in, and we'll have them for five years. And then there's an opportunity in the fifth year to renew for another five. So back in the day before, we had the state, for the past dozen years or so, we had Chuni and Paniki was our IPA, and we had them for ten years before that, so we're circling back to that. They're not local Ray and Associates, though. They're in Iowa or something? Who's that, Ray? Ray. No, they are, they're. They have just local resources or something? Hmm, no, they're, they're.
I think you're thinking of a different Ray and Associates.
Yeah, I think you're. That's thinking of like a headhunting firm. That's the headhunting firm, yeah, no, this is a, this is a, a local accounting firm. Well, local meaning in the state of Ohio, and actually, in northeast Ohio, they have a decent number of clients. Did you, okay. Yeah. But I know what you're thinking. It's, it's, it is, yes, you're right. I know what you're thinking of, the, the, the search, executive search firm. Right, okay. Yeah.
It's not the same company.
Yeah. Okay. Yep, it's, it is different. Yeah, same name doing schoolwork. There you go. So any, anything else on the? Yeah. As I said, you know, once, once the board does the approval, then we'll get everything loaded up into the system, we already have requisitions in place, people are already trying to get their money started, you know, spent, you know, purchase orders going as soon as they can, and, and we will bring a permanent appropriation back to the board in September for final approval.
So we're doing a approval for the proposed appropriation and the five-year forecast?
No, so the five-year forecast, you actually took care of as part of the monthly financials in the consent agenda, so what we're asking you to approve now is under E three, which is on the board docs agenda, which is temporary appropriations versus fiscal twenty-four. So the single page of fiscal twenty-four temporary appropriations, you have that item for action.
All right, can I have a motion for the temporary appropriation FY twenty-four?
I motion, we, we consider the temporary appropriations for FY twenty-four.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gainer. Will you call the roll? Any discussion?
Just thank you for that very detailed explanation, and thank you for providing these in hard copy, so we can go look through them.
It's a lot easier to cross-reference that way. And, and I also want to thank, you know, not only Eric for all the work that he does on this, but really everyone, because, you know, this is a collaborative effort district-wide, and so just making the budget a priority, everyone who submitted their budgets and worked with us and all the questioning we had, and probably some people got a little annoyed with us, but, you know, in the end, that's, I think, I think we ended up with a better product, and as you can see, really not a significantly higher budget in fiscal twenty-four than in fiscal twenty-three.
Yeah, I'm amazed at how close it is.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Gainer.
All right, Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
All right, all minds are clear? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
A motion, I said a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Thank you all, and good night.
Good night. Good night.